Good afternoon. At this time, we're going to start our city council work session, bring to order. I have been advised that Mr. Chris Kyle with Chantel Glow Fiber has been held up in traffic. That was originally our first item for discussion. We're going to reverse our two items this afternoon, so we will be hearing about the Route 460 improvements project funding. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. And to provide a little background for this afternoon's presentation, council, of course, is aware the city is applying to the state for $30.1 million in transportation partnership opportunity funds, or TPOF, for the relocation of private utilities and acquire any necessary right of way for the construction of the 460 improvements. In the order to receive a TPOF fund, it is necessary that the city demonstrates how the project will be funded through construction. Ultimately, as I hope the state and federal funding is anticipated to be received to complete the city's ability to fund the construction. But as part of your consent agenda this evening during your regular session, there is a resolution authorizing the city's participation in the TPOF program. At this time, Director of Finance Charles Meeks will provide some additional background, and he'll be followed by your city's, the city's financial advisor, David Rose, Senior Vice President and Manager of Public Finance with Davenport Associates. Charles?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the city manager indicated, on tonight's consent agenda is a resolution authorizing the city's participation in the Virginia Transportation Partnership Opportunity Fund, or TPOF, program. The city is applying for $30.1 million in TPOF funding to assist with right-of-way and private utility relocation expenses. This will go along with $8.6 million already secured for the project for engineering and design. To acquire the $30.1 million in TPOF funding, the city must demonstrate that we can secure $48 million for the project construction, which at this time is projected to take place somewhere between the fiscal year '27 and fiscal year '29 timeframe. With us this afternoon is David Rose, the city's financial advisor with Davenport and Company. He will provide us with an overview of how the city can secure the $48 million within our existing financial framework. And then, following David's presentation, the city manager is going to provide an overview of funding opportunities that may be available to bring that cost down. So with that, I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Charles, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I won't be too long, I promise, but I would like to, to give you a perspective. Some of you I do not know as well, and hopefully will get to know. Davenport is your independent financial advisor. We're not here to sell you anything, but here to give you a perspective on affordability and the ramifications of decisions that you make. And that's the approach we've had, and we've had the good fortune of working with this, with this wonderful city for probably two-plus decades, and maybe longer. So with that said, here on the background, as financial advisor, what do we do? We've listed three things. That's not exclusively the things that we do for you, but on a regular basis, we will report to the city council, as well as, of course, the city manager. The way we normally do that is through the city manager, so we'll, we'll work closely with Charles and his colleagues and what have you. Some of the things that we actually do specifically in all of those reporting is look at things like your budget, capital planning, overall financial planning, talk about the marketplace, meaning what is opportunities, what are pitfalls, what are we seeing happening in the national market, the regional market, what have you? And then we try to provide some strategies to take care of some of these things that you've identified. We do not identify your capital projects. We don't tell you when the timing is right or wrong. That's what you do for us. And then we try our best to show you what it means. So as you've just been hearing from the city manager and the new director of finance, that third bullet point there is, again, the project at hand, that Road 460 Improvement Project, roughly three-mile stretch. And again, what we have to do to satisfy the potential of getting this TPOF monies is to show that we, as a city, can do our financial share. So I'm going to walk you through what we mean by our financial share and how that is potentially doable from our perspective within your current and your self-imposed financial policy guidelines. So on this page here, as Charles indicated, the first part of this overall roughly $86, $87 million project is $8 million for engineering and design. Those funds have already been identified in your overall capital program. That second piece there, that right-of-way and utilities, that's what is being requested by the city. And again, the feeling is, as I understand it, very solid that that will eventually find its way towards this project. And then the third part, the one that I'm speaking to today, is that roughly $47.5 million that you're going to be required to fund. Now, what you'll see here, and what we're going to talk about, is how we do this, how we think about this preliminarily. But in the background of all this, you as a city enjoy what we call AAA ratings. That's the highest credit ratings you can have as a local government. And again, all three of the national major rating agencies, you've over time gotten that AAA. The way you've gotten that is in part by having strong reserves, that's our last bullet point, by keeping those reserves and not chipping away at them so that if there is an emergency, if there is something that happens, you've got the wherewithal. And at the same time, it gives you flexibility should there be some unexpected shortfalls down the road in revenues or expenditures in future budgets. So all of that plays into this AAA. It also allows us, us being the city, to borrow as low as possible on an interest rate basis. So I mentioned your AAA. These are the three rating agencies: Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, S&amp;P they called it, and Fitch. And it's not like we selectively use them. They really are the only three effective local government advisory rating folks. They look at any number of things, from your financial condition, your economic condition, your demographics, and then finally, your management. And your management includes not just your actual day-to-day managers, but you are considered management. You set policy, you set the tone, you follow those policies, or don't, and in your case, you do. But again, those places that don't necessarily follow them, they're not going to find themselves at AAA. And again, that's important because you're, you're borrowing money at times to do projects. No sense wasting the taxpayers' money. You might as well borrow them as low as possible. And that's, again, what you're able to do, given the fact that you operate this way. So let's talk a little bit about the project, the dollars that I have alluded to. That roughly $48 million is, or was, I should say, originally in the six through 10 years of the CIP. We, when we work with you on a CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, as we call it, we look out not five years, but 10 years. We focus, of course, most heavily on the first five years, but nevertheless, we want to see how a whole decade looks. And as I've said, having worked with you now for at least a couple decades, our focus, our hope, is that the decisions that you make, you're going to be in a better position a decade from now than you are today. And the good news is, you've put yourself in that position over the last 20-plus years, and we don't see that changing by virtue of the way in which we're looking at all this. So what is happening now is this project is being moved up into the first five years, specifically years three, four, and five of the CIP. So we're going to show you what it means to effectively move that project up, and at the same time, not slowing down any of the other projects that you've identified in the next five years. So the important thing is, we're not substituting, we're moving it so that you can take care of those things that you have decided are important. And when I say you've decided, every year simultaneous with the annual budget, you also pass your CIP, your five-year CIP. You approve that. It gets amended every year, but that happens at the same time. What we then do typically, after your budget is done, after you've approved that CIP, we will then typically go to the marketplace in the summertime for capital needs, which we have, we've got them again this year, they're programmed in, and then sometimes, depending, we'll go into the marketplace for your utilities, your enterprise fund, if you would, which is separate from this and is self-supporting by virtue of user fees from those that use the actual water and sewer. So what we did, and what we'll show you today, is the two major criteria for the rating agencies for you is called debt capacity and debt affordability. And what basically that means is debt capacity is theoretical. It says, okay, think of it this way. If you are fortunate to own a home or want to own a home, and you say, okay, I'm looking at a mortgage at $100,000, the capacity basically says you shouldn't have any more than roughly 25% to 28% of your income going towards your mortgage. That's a capacity concept. Then affordability says, okay, if you, for example, want to have a $100,000 mortgage, the question is, what do you take home every month, for example, in income? Do you have $1,000 every month that's available to take care of debt service on a mortgage? That's what we mean by affordability, and we're going to talk a little bit about that as well. So we've got two policies. First one there is debt service versus government expenditures, not to exceed 10%. So that, what I told you a moment ago, for example, mortgages, people go to 25%, 28% of their overall income. For you, we, we keep that, we cap that, if you would, at 10 cents of every dollar. And that's the goal here, is that we will not use more than 10 cents of every budget dollar towards debt service. So that's the first thing we look at, and that's considered very strong by the rating agencies. You meet that policy, and I want to show you here, we're going to continue to meet that policy if we do this. The second is debt service, tax-supported debt versus assessed value. We look at the overall value of the city's real estate that's taxable, that's the focus, and we say, we want to make sure that debt, whether it's $10 million or $100 million, is not more than 4% of the overall value. And we're going to show you that as well. So on this page here, let's look at your overall program of debt that is part of that CIP. And again, I want to just stress, this is just the debt components per purposes of this analysis. And what you'll see is here in fiscal year 2025, when I say here, meaning starting July 1, we've got two different pieces of debt programmed in. One is what we call literary loans. That's with the Virginia Department of Education. That is important. That is factored in. That is for school-related only. And then the general obligation bonds, some 10 million, that is for your ongoing, already-approved CIP projects miscellaneous, if you would. You'll notice then, the last, the third line, that Route 460, what we've then done is we've incorporated, as I said earlier, that new concept of some 48 million over three fiscal years, years, if you would, three, four, and five of the five-year, which is tied into years 2027, 2028, 2029. And we just simply used an average of a third, a third, a third. We may not borrow it that way, but again, we wanted to show you what happens if we do that. So again, a couple other things to point out. We've assumed that interest rates were 5% fixed rate for essentially 20 years. We did a financing yesterday. The interest rate was basically, one, one financing, very highly rated, was about 3.2% for 20 years, the other was close to 3.5% in Virginia. So again, we've purposely tried to build in a cushion, and as you know, if rates get worse, we've got the cushion there. If they get better, the numbers we're going to show you will look that much better. So let's go to this page here, which is effectively those two ratios, your policies, if you would. And that's that dotted or line, I should say, the little diamonds with the red on the left-hand side. This one is that 10% concept. And you'll notice that right now, you're at about 6.5, close to 7%. And when we add in all of that debt over the next five years, we end up basically going up about one percentage point from 6.5 to about 7.5. Now, do I think that's going to happen that way? We'll see. Because what we haven't factored in here, again, is real interest rates. We've put the cushion in. The second thing we haven't factored in is an expense level that is really anywhere similar to what you've experienced in the last five years. We have only grown the denominator at 2%. We've been very conservative. So, so having said that, we feel like, and we've historically showed you, that we've typically come in better than that. But even if we don't, the important takeaway is that we're well below our 10%. So we have the cushion, we have, in effect, built that in, and we feel like that is graphically pretty stable, and that's what you want to see. Right-hand side is the same thing. Debt service to look at assessed value. You know how well your assessed values have grown over the last several years. We've now cut that back, not as economists, but being conservative, also to 2% a year. So again, you can see that never really gets above 2%, yet your policy is at 4%. So once again, the point here is, we feel like you're coming at this project from a position of strength, and you're in quite good position to take care of that from these approaches. So, last page, and this is going to be tied to what I said was that affordability. Right now, your overall debt service in the 2024 fiscal year, the year we're in right now, if you were to go back, look at your budget, we basically, I'm going to round off here, we basically have just slightly under $30 million of debt service that we're paying as part of your overall budget. Next year, in 2025, we've got that, in effect, is going to be about $30 million. And yet, we've got a budget that's higher than that, so we're in good shape. We are set up in very good shape. The year after that, similarly, in good shape to take all of this on. And then, starting in fiscal year 2027, we're going to need to find some additional revenues if indeed the ratios and the timing and all work as we're talking about. And that'll be about $2 million in 2027, and ultimately, by the end of the decade, into the next decade, we'll need about $9 to $10 million additional dollars. I think the important thing here, while that may seem daunting to some of you, let me go back if I could, and while it may seem daunting, if you look here on the left-hand side, again, what it really means is that we're going to go from an overall spending of about 6.5% to maybe 7% to 7.5%. So again, it's still very modest and doable, and that takes into consideration all of the capital projects that you've incorporated already. So with that, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer. Any questions? I appreciate it. Oh, I think, again, you were going to talk, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, David, excuse me. David, we have one more slide right behind yours that we want to touch on real quick.
There it is. Yep.
And this is for me, and of course, all staff and David will be answering any questions you may have. But really, what we've done here is demonstrated how the city would proceed on its own, on the construction. What we want to do is talk about what the plan was originally, anyway, as we looked at construction. And that was utilizing state and federal funding as best as we can. And that would be either smart-scale revenue sharing. On the federal side, the raise or really rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, or the infra grant opportunities, or the protect, as you see here. It's, it's our goal is to secure additional state and federal funding for the construction of this project, or partial thereof. So we wanted to make that point clear, but as we move forward and working with the Secretary of Transportation, we did need to demonstrate that we could move the project forward on our own if necessary. And so that's what the exercise today, well, I want to call it exercise, it's the, what we're trying to demonstrate today. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any more questions that you may have.
Thank you, council. Questions or comments? Councilman Johnson?
First, David. So are we actually looking to change our current CIP?
I understand going forward, not change your current CIP, but as you do your new CIP. Am I right?
So this CIP stays in place as presented?
I'm sorry.
This CIP stays in place as presented?
Yes.
And then, but what we'll do is move the whole process for the 10-year, we'll move into another room. I guess my, my real concern for the public, just so everybody understands exactly what's going forward, if perchance, we aren't able to raise any of this money through the feds and through the state, that has been, they've assured us that we can, it will fall back on the citizens of this city, correct?
I would defer to the manager on that.
Al, that's, I guess that's my, my concern, for just from, I'm, I'm not real clever when it comes to some of these items, but I want to make sure I understand that that's what we're about. But the goal, of course, is to receive the funding from outside sources that have told us they would be helping us, correct?
Yes. What we've been asked to do is demonstrate, for the TPOF funding, the 30.1 million, to demonstrate that we can complete the project through construction. And that's what we're trying to do. Again, your question is, if we do not receive the federal funding or state funding, any means, yes, we would probably be looking at having to support some of the construction, that is, or scale the project back in other means. The key is to, though, that as we're talking about an $86 million project, we've already scored, secured over 30.8 of it in, in non-local dollars, others than $1 million of local dollars.
Well, the question I'd like to look at down the road, we don't have to do that right now, but the amount of, that we're investing in this property for the roadwork and the amount of development that's going to go on on the property, will the tax revenues from that justify this in the long run? I mean, 10 years from now. Once the property is developed, and, you know, the warehouses are built, or whatever we put on that property is developed, the taxes will be enough to cover this debt? Just a question.
I might have to defer on some of the work.
I don't have to have an answer right now, I'm just curious. It raises some concerns from my perspective, as far as...
We've run some scenarios on what the build-out of that project would be. I just do not have them.
And my other concern is, we all are very much aware that we've got a lot of expense coming up in the next 10 years, as far as providing schools and providing infrastructure and these kind of things. And we feel pretty comfortable with the fact that that's not going to deter from any of that.
As, of course, as David demonstrated, we've layered this on top of the other work in the CIP.
Okay. They're my concerns. All right, thank you.
Councilman Fawcett.
David, thanks for coming out. It's always a pleasure to have you come. Just a couple of things. Do you see in any way, shape, or form that this would have any effects on the debt rate that we hold, as if we get to the point where we start? Just a hypothetical, if we got to where we'd have to put this money from local dollars into it, how would that bounce against our debt as it is today? Or would it be, as we go forward? I mean, we raised it a little bit, but that's not really, it's not enough compared to what this dollar amount would have to be to bring it up.
So, Councilman, if I understand your question, I, I think the ratios I showed will give comfort to the ratio, the rating agencies and investors, that this is doable, it's financeable. If you think back to a number of years ago, when we started talking about some of the CIPs for the five years going forward, when you think about earlier in your days on council, we showed that, just like that last page, we're going to need additional dollars, we showed that as well to council. And you, as a council, have always done a good job of making sure, because you had debt several years in advance to know it, to start putting dollars away to take care of that increase in debt service. So I believe, while here we're showing you, it's now effectively, I'm going to round off here, it's effectively now July 1 of 2025, because we're really about to, to go there in just a couple months, we're really talking about needing material dollars about three fiscal years away. So it gives us that opportunity. Now, at the same time, as the manager said, if things go south, for whatever reason that you have no control of, you know, economically, demographically, what have you, certainly that project can be slowed, amended. If the state doesn't come through with their monies, you have that ability to review and see what you want to do. So it's not as if you are, you correct me, city manager, it's not as if, you know, you get the resolution passed and they commit the dollars, but again, you at the end of the day are going to control your destiny, you, not, not them.
Yeah, I always worry about that, that good old interest rate that you talk about a lot of times, because that interest rate just gets kind of, kind of bouncy, and we're not really sure where we fall when we try to go and, and grab this money or make these finances, that we could be there. And I certainly wouldn't want to put a big debt on, you know, the citizens here to have to pay that debt, and there's only one way to pay it, that's that, hopefully, the revenues would be coming in that we could do it with. I mean, we're very favorable, and it looks, our future looks good, but then again, you, you don't know where a bump in the road's going to come. We got an election year coming up that is in quite a bit of turmoil and not knowing how it's going to shake, and then what happens on the other side of that. So for those folks like yourself and these economic people that are trying to figure all this out, it's, it's a stormy day. So I, I just always look at that side of it, no more than when I borrow on my own, how I look at that, which I try not to do, but, you know, somewhere along the way.
Well, again, and as you know, we historically have been in front of you on several times a year, so we're monitoring things. Your staff does a great job of giving reports, so we know how things are tracking. It's not as if we wait to know what we are once a year. That's not the case. We know it along the way. The other side, too, is I did not put in any refinancing for savings purposes, not pushing debt out, but simply the fact that we've got debt out there right now, as we continue to move through time, we've historically, because we're so highly rated, as you know, and others, we've been able to refinance just to bring those debt service payments down. We factored none of that in, and that's been significant over the years. So I feel like we've got arrows in our quiver, and we've got safety, if you want to call it, safety ramps for all of this, that gives me some good comfort. The other thing, too, is the way in which we looked at borrowing this for just illustrative purposes tonight, or this afternoon, is not necessarily the only way we can borrow this money. So there are some ways that we can do that. If you turn around as a council and say, we absolutely have to do this, this is critical to us at the time, things may not look, let's say they don't look as good, I'm just going hypothetically, there are some ways that we can structure some of that debt, so it's not as onerous as I've just shown it to you. We've not tried to create a rosy picture purposely, Councilman Fawcett. We've just tried to say, just bluntly, boom, here it is, here's the order of magnitude, know where the good things happen, what does it mean to us? And that's what I've done.
Well, over the years that I've sat here, and you've been in front of this council, I can't, I count times, every time it's budget time or utility time, blah, blah. You know, you're, you're right on the money. You, you're always spot-on and very trustworthy in bringing good information, and we've not failed anywhere along the way. And I guess that comes with the good policies we have, as well as, you know, we've got good people behind us looking at the numbers all the time, and this is not, this here is not something you just throw a number at, just come up with something. is not something you just throw a number at and just come up with something here. I'm sure, and I have the utmost confidence, that you and the staff here have done a good job putting this on the table to where I feel very comfortable that this project will move along in probably somewhat seamless fashion, unless we have a major catastrophe. And then anything can happen in any situation if that happens. So I appreciate you, and I appreciate the staff, doing the hard work along with the manager's office to get this to where it's at. It brings a little comfort, hopefully the state and federal dollars will fall in place. You know, that's kind of always an up and down process, whether that money's there or not, but we feel somewhat comfortable that it will. So I'm okay with this, and I'm not going to second guess it, because you're the expert, and I haven't trusted you in 12 years, and you haven't failed us.
I appreciate it. Again, I think it's a good group, a good staff, and again, we're here early, that's the whole point. I mean, you think about it, we're really here almost three years early processes, and so it's not as if we're asking you to have us borrow $48 million in the next fiscal year, or even the one after that, nothing like that. So I feel good about that as well, that we've got, as I said, we've got the exit ramps, we've got the possibilities. The City Manager indicated you're going to try for some other potential grant fundings or what have you, that haven't been counted in purposely. So again, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think we are.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Councilman Rector?
Thank you very much. I guess it's a genuine luxury for the city that we are in a position like this, to where we can demonstrate an ability to carry this project on our own if we had to. Just a couple of questions. The money projections going out to 2029, do they take into account any anticipated ramp-ups in the cost of the project as time moves forward?
I'll defer on the actual project side, Councilman, to the staff, because they know, again, we've been given the dollars, and that's what we've been told, so I'll defer to your staff.
Councilman, as we look at that project numbers, it does, it is a conservative approach that's been done by staff to take a look at what the ultimate cost would be. So I think we're looking at a conservative number on that construction, short of any pandemic or anything like that. I mean, as we've witnessed that, but where we are today, and I see the Director of Public Works was just nodding at me, but I thought I was correct, that we've taken a conservative approach on the construction cost. I would also, if I have the opportunity, unless you have another question for me, be able to call Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes to the podium to address Councilman Johnson's question earlier, too.
I have another question, but I wrote it down, so I won't forget it.
I feel like I'm coming to the witness stand. So when this was under discussion here most recently, we took a model based upon a conservative model, so future real estate taxes based upon their, the build-out plan. Additionally, I took a very conservative approach about what a business operation would be inside one of these warehouses. So the most bare bones warehouse, so essentially racking in a few forklifts. What we're seeing more than not is a lot of automation, so higher taxes, but to be conservative, to really think through this, we brought down some revenue projections. Again, so we just looked at two revenue streams, did not look at business B-pole taxes or things of that nature. So again, I'll repeat, I ran a model based upon real estate taxes and business personal property, and what you see at full build-out is you can plan on about $3 million just in those two revenue items. So at full build-out, at a $46 million project, your return on investment's about 15 years, and that's a very conservative approach, not taking all revenue factors into consideration, but to create some comfort when we looked at it.
Councilman Rector?
Well, Kevin, you might also be the source answer for this next question of mine, too. The gentleman from Davenport talked about the potential for, we have off-ramps, and we can do this, that, and the other thing, if, quote, "things go south," and we're not able to fund this thing the way that this projection shows. Is the development of that project, the Port 460 thing, is that, I know sometimes with residential developments, phases of it are contingent upon certain road improvements and whatnot being completed. Is the Port 460 such so that we don't end up with a nightmare situation where it all gets built out, but we don't have the means to do the road improvement?
No, the road improvement related to Port 460 and the connection there, although there is one, nothing precludes them from building their commerce park, as you can visualize it, with the exception of they are required to open a door there and start process, some significant off-site improvements, which in some thinking is kind of temporary improvements to be operational. The ultimate 460 project that we're talking about today would improve those, but that does not necessarily have to be in place for them to build out the entire park. What we're hoping to do with this whole scenario is ensure that 460 is improved, modernized as they're in place.
Council, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Hughes, who is here? Any other comments? If not, I've got just a few. First of all, I don't think we need to lose track of exactly why we're doing this, you know, what we're doing by what Mr. Rose is doing to provide the ability for us to pay for the remaining portion of the project. Because that's what's being required, you know, when the Deputy Manager and the City Manager and I went to Richmond, to be honest with you, we kind of got blindsided by the Deputy Secretary of Transportation. The TPOF money, I think its total is about $100 million, it's in a fund that's rather discretionary, that the Governor and Secretary of Transportation have discretion over. And when we sat down, a lot of this really started with the Port 460 project, and the Port 460 project itself basically brought attention to the amount of traffic that would be generated from the port with or without the 460 project. You know, looking at the numbers that we saw that were projected to increase in truck traffic creates a necessity for us to improve 460 with or without Port 460. Now, with the Port 460 coming on, coming onboard, when it was in the negotiation stages and before it went to a vote, there was a lot of support that came from Richmond, and part of that was support was, they would help us with the improvement on 460, not necessarily because Port 460 was there. I mean, obviously, for them, this is a regional project. I mean, the traffic generated out of the port is regional traffic, it's going to come through our city whether we like it or not. It's also, as far as an evacuation route, there's a lot of reasons why this particular project has regional concerns, or is a regional issue. But as I was getting back to, we went to Richmond, it's all been positive, everyone inferred that money was coming. But then when we got there, after about 10 minutes, the Deputy Secretary of Transportation says, well, we really have difficulty allocating funds if we don't know that a locality will not be able to bring it to fruition. So we're not, I don't see us handing out $31 million to a project that may not be completed if the locality doesn't have the wherewithal to complete the project, because to them, that's just $31 million wasted. So I was a little miffed when all this came up, because nobody said they were looking for it. Had we been aware of that, had we been made aware of that, this discussion would have happened 60 to 90 days ago. If they said, yeah, we're still behind you 100%, we want, we want to promote this project, but you got to show how you're going to get it done, we could have had this discussion 60 or 90 days ago. They did not do that. The $31 million is $31 million we don't have to spend. Part of the, one of the reasoning behind the 460 project is not just the generation of tax revenue and all the other things that we talked about, it was that it would offer a unique opportunity to get ahead of a transportation issue, which is what you get on 58. Unfortunately, with smart scale funding, you don't get any money until you have congestion, and once you have congestion, then it's a problem. So this is a unique opportunity to get ahead of it. So we don't want to do anything to jeopardize that. There are, as the manager showed, alluded to, you know, we are still working on multiple, multiple different ways to acquire funding for our balance of the project, which would be about 41, $48 million. So we'd basically be 45% home before we have to spend really a dollar of our money, other than the $1 million we put into the original 8 million, and then the port put in a million, the contractor put in 6 million, to get where we are now. There are the smart scale revenue sharing. From the federal side, we've got help from the port, he was very, much more familiar with federal grants than we are, and we're working hand-in-hand with city staff as well to work on raise funding and the inferment of Protake money. We've been constantly in touch with Kane's office and Warner's office, and everybody's in agreement, they want to do what they can do to help us. There are also different funding sources, you know, we've, the way Mr. Rose has it, I mean, we just got it listed with the rest of the GO bonds, but there was other ways to make this happen. I mean, the state of Virginia has what's called VTIB, which is a way, which is kind of a line of credit, and that's basically all we'd have to do. You don't have to borrow any money. We just say, can you give us a $48 million line of credit to show that we have the credit worthiness to make this project happen, regardless of what happens in the meantime? And we could have gone that route also, just put the application in, get your line of credit, just like a second mortgage on your house, you don't have to use it. So we get the line of credit, and that proves to the state that worst-case scenario, we can go, we can use that line of credit to fund the rest of the project. But that might not necessarily be the case, we might get lucky and get grants for most of it, we might get federal funding, you know, it takes care of all the contingencies that we have to think about. So this is a good deal, we're going to, I mean, if council's okay with it, you know, we just need to show the wherewithal to make it happen, which we can, and this is the way to do it, Mr. Rose showed us how to do it. And then we can get this information to the Secretary of Transportation, and I think I'm at liberty to say, and he's going to review it and make sure there's no more surprises. I don't want any more surprises. The manager's going to put it together with staff, we're going to send it up there, we're going to send, now, look, you look at it, you read it, you check it out, you make sure we've dotted the i's, crossed the t's, because I don't want to hear any crap if this money doesn't come, that we forgot to do something. And that's going to be the plan. So I'm looking forward to this happening, hopefully it will, and we'll be halfway home to getting ahead of a project that we'd have to deal with. I mean, I'm not going to deal with it, and maybe, but 10 years from now, someone's going to deal with it, same way we're dealing with 58. So we have a unique opportunity to knock it out now, and it's going to be a big plus for our taxpayers all the way around, and the folks living in the neighborhood. So, whatever you said, that's it for that. We got something on our agenda for later on, they're considering a regular meeting. Anything else?
No, you just said it, I was going to remind council that we do have a resolution as part of the consent agenda on this matter this evening.
Okay. We okay for our next item?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, with us this afternoon is Chris Kyle with Shenan Delatella Communications Company, he's Vice President of Industry Affairs and Regulatory. He'll provide you, counsel, an update on the construction installation of the glow fiber broadband system they're installing throughout the city. Chris, how are you this evening?
Yes, sir, it's great to be here. As discussed, I'd like to give a short update on this pretty exciting project, the fiber project in the city of Suffolk, which will deliver advanced technology, that means higher broadband speeds, and also choice to your citizens and businesses here in Suffolk. All right? The first slide in my control on this, I'll go this way. There we go. Where we started, just, and the resources that we brought to bear on this project, this is who we are, 100-year-old company, we're going to build a great network here, that's what we've done. Everywhere we've gone, we've got more than 800 employees supporting this project. You can see our annual revenues, almost $270 million in annual revenues, and this is a regional project, we're doing this in Suffolk, Williamsburg, Jame City, County York, is what's going on. But let's talk about Suffolk. I'll apologize first, Dr. K, I want to thank him for all of his support as we've gone through. There's a lot of hard work still going on in this project, both from our part, but really the city's part, and I'll get into some of that. Our people like to talk big numbers and say, we have feet on this slide, and no one in the real world talks feet, but you can see what we've already built in the, just the city, 477,000 feet, that's 90 miles of fiber in the city of Suffolk. I've got a map that will come up here, and I'll show you where, but kind of in the city center downtown area is where we've started. We've got over 10,000 citizens that can get this new advanced technology. What you have done to vote, to approve this franchise, makes a difference, and it's already made a difference to 10,000 homes. We've got another 24 neighborhoods, we are actively constructing, so there's a lot of work going on, a lot of partner dust, a lot of customer communication, I'll talk more about that in a minute with our people. That'll cover another 4,700 homes here, and by the end of the year, we'll be into another 32 neighborhoods, and we'll hit another 6,600 homes. There's lots of coordination, you know, roadwork, traffic control, things like that that we're doing, that we've still got to work out in, you know, what we call our permitting and final engineering phase. So when all said and done, we'll hit almost 29,000 homes here in the city of Suffolk. And, you know, this 2 million feet, there'll be more than 2.2 million feet of fiber, I wrote it down here somewhere, over 90 miles of fiber in the city, of brand-new, future-proof fiber, what everyone wants for the next century, when you, I'm just listening to this presentation, for the future, this is the technology you want that will power business, will power learning from home, working from home, and all the entertainment that you're going to want when you select where you want to live. So this project will carry us through most of 2025. And here's a map to visualize, the green, we have, those are the 10,000 homes active, we still have a little bit of construction in parts of that, and then the yellow is kind of where we have active, very active, construction going on in and around the city. And so, you know, neighborhoods to the south, Turlington Park, neighborhoods to the north in the Oakland area, India Point Estates area, so you can orient yourself to that. So a very comprehensive build in the, you know, denser parts of Suffolk. Customer communication is critical, it has been, it's critical right now. A lot of our construction, we're going to follow power, is buried, and so we're in people's, I say yards, but we're in the rights-of-way that, you know, run up to their yards, and so people have lots of questions, and we don't want any surprises, but they're going to be. This is a disruptive process. So we do mailers, we do door tags, we have an 800 number, this 866-997-6474, where people can log, you know, if they've got a question or a complaint, and, you know, we respond very rapidly. I, you know, it may not always be within the day, but it's very quickly. I mean, some of the things that I was looking through, that we're seeing is, you know, we'll do some underground, we'll pack the dirt down, but then, you know, it'll sink back down, and we got to go back and add some more dirt because of the soil composition here. So we're doing lots here. People can also log questions and comments online on that construction website, and then we interface, as I said, with Dr. K, Kevin Hughes, there's weekly meetings on this, by the way, going on. So it's just, you know, I'll say a tidal wave of work, and we appreciate, and Robert Lewis, you know, the coordination and questions and just, you know, this is, you know, inch by inch, we'll go back to foot by foot while we talk foot by foot, before we can get to a mile of work. There's a lot of work, especially when it's buried construction, and you involve citizens. But at the end of the day, you know, what we, where we, this is transformative for communities, and it's worth the work. So, yeah, a lot of work, as we run through 20- So, yeah, a lot of work as we run through 2024. We've covered that with the neighborhoods. And then we'll be into negotiating one-off agreements, lots of apartments have access agreements that take a little bit longer. We want to get into all of those, and we have good success doing that. And then businesses. The businesses downtown can get our service today, but this is certainly a service that has a very good take rate with our businesses, and it certainly, you know, it helps. Any business is online today, and this is one more thing that can help small businesses specifically. So that's the bulk of the project. I feel like I've been talking too much, but I hope this gave you kind of a thumbnail sketch of where we are and what we're doing, and why you see so many purple trucks running around, and you may have gotten a couple of questions from citizens, and I'll answer any of your questions here, and if I don't have an answer, I can follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kyle. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. I've had quite a few concerns from some of my constituents with notification of when you would be in their area of doing the construction, and then letting them know their area that you've been, so they'll be on the lookout. But some of them have had a lot of water lines cut where their service was out for two or three hours, and they were very concerned about that. Some of them thinking that you were in their yard, not in the right-of-way.
Right.
So I don't know how you're dealing with those people that has those concerns.
Well, the short of it is, we'll stop if someone comes out and thinks that we're, if, you know, we talk about, you know, our plans and we show that, but, you know, if they still, and we've had some of these where we'll stop, we'll call in the city and go that route, you know. We don't want to be anywhere people don't want us to be. Let me say that, because if we don't do this right, we're not going to have people that want to subscribe to our service at the end of the day. But we're not perfect, and I agree, we've had a couple of water strikes, and they have all been fixed. It has caused two or three hours, but we fix it on our repair bill. But that's part, you're describing part of the disruption. We can always do better with customer communication, and we do work hard with that. I'm willing to take any neighborhood's in-question on that. But, yeah, the short answer is, you know, if someone thinks we're on their property, and once we go through and show our plans and show where the property lines are, and they still disagree, we just stop and we call the city, and, you know, we resolve it that way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But I do want to emphasize that, I mean, we want to be, I mean, 28,000, 29,000 homes passed is a big number here. But, yeah, if, for some reason, you know, whether, and it could be an HOA, a private HOA, that just doesn't want us there, you know, we'll just tell the city we're not going to go there, and we want to be where people want us. But thank you for your comments. We can always do better with customer communication.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Kyle, I've got one question for you. I'm looking at your map here, and you've got it mapped out with active access and then active construction.
Yes, sir.
Are these, those two designations, is that the limit of your services? You're going to expand further than that?
I'll have to, if I could, follow up to see if we've got 28,000 homes in here. You know, my guess is, we've got, what I believe is, we're going to have some areas not listed on this map right now because it's not under active construction, and, you know, I can follow up with Kevin on that. But, you know, the other part of this is, we don't like to telegraph to our competitors too far in advance where we're going, because what we're seeing is, and, you know, business, customers win when businesses compete, but our competitors do try to go around and lock customers into long-term contracts or lower prices. All good for the customer, but, yeah, I would assume, and I can follow up if it's okay with Kevin to confirm. Yeah, go ahead.
You may recall that we did a couple of leases with Chantel for their point of presence, and so one of them's up at the library, and so not giving too much of your trade secrets away. The whole northern Suffolk section is also going to be part of their coverage, just not shown on their map. They just haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay. So basically, you've got the ability to expand, it's just a matter of whether it works with the business model and my, follow that up with another question. I've had citizens call me, say, "How do I find out if this service is available for my address, where I live, whether it's available now, whether it's going to be available in the future? Can they go to your website and put their address in there and see if service is or is going to be available?"
They absolutely can, yes.
And that's the easiest way to do it?
That's, that would be the easiest way to do it.
Okay, because I've had that question asked. They see, you know, I've said, I've had people come to me, say, "I've seen this truck running around. Am I going to have that service or not? Were they just driving through?"
Right.
So now I'll be able to tell them, "Go to the website, put in your address."
Glowfiber.com, and, you know, they're going to be cascading mailings. We do mailings before, before we start construction. Well, before we start construction, that's another way. But, yeah, as, and we like this curiosity, this interest for certain, and generally, you know, if they're in a neighborhood, if there's some density there, well, we're going to, we're going to be coming.
And within your presentation, you have begin negotiating success-based business agreements. I assume you haven't engaged any businesses yet, but the business would also have to be located in that area where you have residential service?
Yes, sir. But the downtown area for certain, well, let me clarify on this. So our push here was first and foremost to get service to residential units, and that's how we designed this network. But we knew we'd pick up an awful lot of businesses in, both in the downtown area where, you know, certainly, I know you've got growing warehouses, as you were discussing, and so if it's within our, you know, proposed network design, you know, that's our business-as-usual case, and certainly small businesses, very, very affordable, you know, business internet, you know. But we do very large internet pipes for very large schools, businesses, and things like that, universities, and that gets into, we'll do special builds to get to a Fortune 500 company, for instance, things like that. That is success-based, where we may not have designed it, you know, within our existing residential architecture, but we'll go ahead and run X number of miles of new fiber to get to a large complex that's got a lot of employees. And, you know, you're talking about, you know, it's just a very different thing. But, yeah, so we are pushing hard for residential right now. We do have a couple of small, what we call small business, sales reps that'll start kind of feeding into the area, knocking on doors, talking to, you know, businesses with two to 20 employees that sit within, you know, this bill. Does that answer your question? But there's going to be another whole approach of the large businesses, and we have a different group, and that, they may involve some additional construction.
So from a business standpoint, let's say I was interested to see if I had any options with GlowFiber for my business. How would I go about doing that?
I'm happy to take your name. You know, it is a, yeah.
How would any business be able to do that?
Right. GlowFiber, as I say this, I got to make sure we've set this thing up for Suffolk, but there'll be a, you know, business inquiry where you can, you know, you call them. Basically, you go to GlowFiber, there'll be a phone number, and I'll make sure the email, I'll follow up with you to make sure that we've got Suffolk set up now to have our small business piece, so people can inquire about it. And normally, it's not just you and your address, it's, you know, you're interested in business, and we'll have someone call you.
Well, the key is, the more players we have, the more competition there is in the market, the better off our citizens are and our businesses are, but they need to be able to relatively, it should be relatively easy to find out what options they have. So before they commit one place, you know, they can check with you and, you know, weigh their options there.
Absolutely.
But in any event, getting these homes, I mean, I'm going back two and a half to three years, talking about the lack of high-speed internet to our rural areas that are, weren't served at all or underserved, and then, of course, with COVID and kids having to be home from school, and the issues we had there, this is, you know, we have come a long way in the last 36 months, not only with what you're providing, but what the manager and his staff has been able to do, and some of the regional agreements and grants that we've gotten. So thank you for being part of it. Thanks for coming to Suffolk.
And I just want to say, we couldn't do this without the leadership of city staff. There is a tremendous amount of work that the city staff has taken on daily for a project like this.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Councilman Bennett?
One thing I was looking after, Mayor talked about the area. Is there any way that we could get a copy, maybe Kevin, of streets? I can't tell. I see the green area, but I can't see, somebody asked about their area, if the streets was legible. I could say, "Where are your streets in the area that's already, it's up and running or not?"
We can follow up on that.
Okay. I'd appreciate it.
And I appreciate you looking forward. There's been so much partner in your desk, we're building, 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 and then when we build a neighborhood, you know, you're just there in front of the residents. But the business question is very timely, and it's now time for us to kind of, you know, look forward, you know, past the construction phase, and you're absolutely right, you know, make it easier for businesses. I'll make sure we've got our small business contact form set up properly. Detail on streets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Whoops, wait. Y'all sneaking in on me here.
Yeah, sorry about that. If, and I had a neighbor tell me that they were going to sign up for the internet service, but then they had wanted to keep their other cable because they liked the TV lineup better or whatever. But as long as you can get that app, their app, somewhere on the internet, either through a Roku or directly into your TV, you can meld those two services, can't you?
Well, I can't speak to the other providers, but I would say generally, what I've seen in my own experience is, the answer is yes, and all you need to take from us is internet. You can take, we have a video product, but you don't, we don't require it. All you got to take is internet, and we've seen people combine our internet with YouTube, Hulu, I'm not endorsing any of these, but they certainly, that seems to be the trend of melding a different video option with our internet.
Okay, counsel, last shot, questions, comments? Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it. Okay, that concludes our work session. We do have a need for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Item number one, pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Fine Arts Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Sister Cities Commission, the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, Western Tidewater Community Services Board, and the Wetlands Board. And item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel regarding the enforcement of encroachments into the city's right-of-way.
Counsel, Councilman Fawcett? Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilmember Butler-Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler-Barlow. Are any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Meeting stands adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.